This time we'll ask everyone to rise for the invocation by Ms. Mona. Stay standing for the pleasure to fly, Ms. Mona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please let's all bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Handlin, please note that all members of council and president will be deceiving Mr. Greedy and Mr. Greedy's views this evening. There's a floor. Obviously, if you're speaking for yourself, three minutes. If you're speaking for an organization, association, you have five minutes. Anyone for courtesy of the floor?
Mr. Hahn, name and address. Twenty-six TV, Times Two. Good evening. I would just like to say that, again, at this time, I can point out that after a brief discussion with the solicitor, that it would have been interesting to find out that if council had their own solicitor here tonight to challenge what they were told and told them how they could take that part of the budget and not destroy the safety of the thing, because the only thing that would change in the decision you made was the supervision from Cetera. Everything else seems to be, the workers come to work. If that contract would drop, everything would stay together. Now, if council had its own lawyer and he would have been representing you, I think we have a different answer. So, again, this is why it's important that council gets its own reputation so that let the two lawyers battle it out and see who wins, not a legal mind and a non-legal mind. So, I'm sad that, again, it comes to a situation where council was not, in my opinion, not represented to fully on their side of the law and what they could do versus what the city solicitor, who works first for the mayor, second for the city, and if there's anything left over, then the public gets it.
Mr. Hahn.
Mr. President, I'd like to...
No, I'm going to respond first.
Okay.
Mr. Hahn, you are totally wrong, okay? Okay, I agree with you on one point. City council should have their own solicitor. Totally agree with you there. We went into caucus to ask a legal question. She gave us a legal answer. She didn't give us her opinion. She answered us with a legal answer. Legal questions. You're just, you went off totally, totally somewhere else, but what else is new?
Well, I'll tell you what's new.
No, no, you're done!
Facts and verify!
You're done!
Facts and verify!
You are done!
Still a time on the clock.
You are done!
No, no, you're done!
No, you're done!
You're the lame duck, not me!
You're done! I'll tell you what, Mr. Hahn. You come up week after week. You try to talk, make fools out of us, and you imply that had we had our own counsel, solicitor, we'd go back and forth. You're wrong. We asked her a legal question and we got an answer. That's all we asked her. You're a little sidebar with Ms. Fruitworth. I don't know what that was about. But you're wrong. Legal question, that's what she's here for. She also works for, your opinion is she works for the mayor. She also, at this time, works for city council. Tonight, she's working for city council. We went into caucus. We asked her a legal question. She gave us a legal answer. That's all. That's all.
Which remains a secret.
It should be obvious by the vote. And I just want to say, too, that I worked for, when I worked for the city, I worked with Ms. Fruitworth for years, and I've worked with her on city council. And I do not question her reputation or the answers that she gives me. Thank you.
It wasn't about the reputation.
I didn't ask for a response.
It wasn't about the reputation. It was facts and verify.
That's the one the officer gave me.
Hold on, hold on. You're done?
You've continued. I did.
Are you finished? Because you say one more word, you're out of here. You're out of here. It's all you try to do is come up week after week. We had a vote. Vote's over. End of it. Ms. Gashel. Gashel, your turn.
Hello, President. My name is John Gashel, 119 West Wallmart Street. I have a question. When is the enforcement of the addresses going to be applied to having them on your door or a step to make them legible for everybody to see? So many homes do not have the addresses, and I was under the impression that that's an ordinance, that it should be.
Good, that's a good question. I don't know. It is an ordinance.
And a lot of places do not have them.
Who gets on that, Mr. Leiter? What division of your CDC gets on that one?
That was just a question.
That's a good question. That's a real good question.
The fire department, the police?
No, you're right. You don't have an address, you can't find it if there's a fire or a disturbance. Go ahead, Ms. Leiter.
It's a very good question. And which department of mine? I would say all of them. So, anytime any of our people go out there, that's something we'll look at, and they'll notify us back here. We'll do what we can to enforce it. But I can't put it on one department, though, because not every department will go to a house. So, it could be our inspectors. It could be our health, community health. So, I'll make sure that we start looking at that.
Okay.
That's a real good question.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Name and address, Ms. Rutter.
Good evening. 117344 South 11th Street, Allentown. Mr. Hendrix tonight had their last vote, and he said they had the figures. Can you make these figures public? That you say that you believed his numbers? So, maybe we could do a comparison. I mean, I know you already voted, and we're locked in, but you say you have these numbers and you believe that his were right or correct. Maybe we should have a listing and a breakdown of those numbers. So, can we have those, or you're gonna...
Mr. Hahn. Those numbers become...
They do.
They become...
As I understand, Mr. Rutter, you have a, there are several right-to-know requests pending at our office for the contract?
No, I have a pending right-to-know for the addendums that were written, which was based on the 5% increases that the administration accepted without anybody knowing about it on the non-targeted money. That was for the last five, six years. So, I wrote a right-to-know, basically, wanting to find out if it was legal that they could do that outside the contract, because most, sometimes they do MOUs. In this case, it looks like they're doing addendums when they started back in 2009.
I don't want him to speak as to what you're requesting, but I know that we have pending requests from others regarding Cetera. And now, that that would not be releasable before council approved. Now that tonight the vote was taken, they are, once they are fully executed with the vendor and the city, they become public record. And that would be available to then the public and anybody who...
Well, I already have the right-to-know in for the addendums that were ever written against that contract. So, I'm waiting for 30 days that you ask for, and when I get them, I'll review them.
But to improve, to improve the contract tonight opens it up the public record, obviously.
Yes.
But I'm back to the numbers. And he says he got the council seen tonight. So, I mean, he believes that, in disapproval, he believed that those numbers were right. Now, I'm just, we'd like to see the numbers. Numbers are numbers. So, let's check them out. Unless we do a right-to-know, or can you guys provide them?
You can submit a right-to-know, but ultimately, these contracts will be on the website? Not sure how that works, but they are...
Well, if I do a right-to-know, you're going to have multiple right-to-no's in, I mean, at $500 per foot or whatever. If that's what you want.
You want to see the contract. Do you want to see...
I know what the contract is. I built a number for the contract, the overall number, but he said that their numbers were going to be cheaper than the SEIU that they came up with, and I have a hard time believing that's true. So, I mean, but you might be seeing numbers that I don't see or the public doesn't have. It's almost impossible what you're saying. But you said it was true, so let's see where it's... It's impossible. Well, that's what I'm asking for, the numbers. Mr. Henderson, how are you, sir?
Hi, I'm here for a different reason. I'd like to know on the rainwater tax, what the cost is going to be for Seating Island. You know, we're going to have, we're going to have to say, does Mr. Arzl know what the cost is going to be for Seating Houses? For rainwater taxes?
Mr. Henderson. Hey, let's stay, let's stay in task here, okay? Please. Mr., what's your question? What's the city going to pay?
The city of Allentown for the rainwater tax.
Go ahead.
The budget. That's better. We had proposed, and I'm going to add a little clarification in this statement, that we are going to end up expending in the first year a little over $4 million.
I'm asking that with the budget. I'm asking, what is the city's cost for 2% or the $20 per square feet?
$20 per 500 square feet.
Why is the city's cost for $500 per square foot cost? I know what the school district is. Mr. Arzl told me it's going to be $130. It's going to be two feet or either going to get off, they'd offer, or it's going to be a hundred.
$130 would be $130,000.
$130,000, I'm sorry. I know what the school district is going to be. How do I know what the city is going to be?
Yeah, we do. It's a matter of whatever. I have not looked at the details of all of our impervious surface, but everybody who's tied to this is going to, I mean, there would be an expectation that there'd be something coming out of the general fund and going to the stormwater fund as a means of taking care of our responsibility on this.
Can we get, can we get an amount?
I will, and number two.
Yeah, we'll get you a amount. How much square footage we have at $20? $20, $20 for $500 per foot?
It's not going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
What's that?
It's not going to be a couple hundred thousand. School district, $130, come on.
Well, they have a lot of buildings. They have a lot of buildings.
So do we. And a lot of properties. So, what I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is get rid of this fund, the voluntary water fund. Put a tax in the general fund. And get rid of 2% tax. Mr. Chairman, you know, we're going to be taxing youth groups, providing service for the youth, homeless drivers, we're going to be taxing people with limited income, many nonprofits. We're going to be taxing them. Where are we going to get this money to pay? So, what I would do, Mr. Chairman, go back to where we were before. Put it in a general fund. Cut costs. Look for if we can get additional revenue. And forget this stuff. What Mr. Arzl's doing in the mayor, they're just balancing the general fund so they don't have to raise wages during income tax. They're just looking at different ways to get this thing out of general fund so they don't have to look how we can save more in taxes. So, put a tax in, sort of cut costs. Look if we can make the addition revenue. I gave you three points. This week, we can make the addition revenue. I just hope you don't throw it in the garbage, because, oh, they're out of it. The one where the mayor didn't enforce collection of taxes for 12 years. Just buried it. Council just sits on it. I don't lie. You didn't question the mayor why he's not enforcing orders since he's been mayor for 12 years. Must be thousands of dollars out there. He can't. He has a limited income, Mr. Chairman. The school district, either it was two teachers or not going to hire two teachers or any other, Mr. Chairman. You just said $130. I mean, that's two teachers. See, you got it. You're the financier. I can't even tell you what the cost is going to be. He will. He will. Wayne.
How about, well, hopefully, we have a budget meeting on Monday night? Budget meeting maybe?
He didn't present the letter. How he's like earning income tax under...
Go ahead.
He didn't present the letter yet. From the auditor general, where he's charging municipalities, people that work in Seating Island. They're living in Allentown. We're charging them earning income tax under Act 205. He can't present that letter, even if the auditor general says we don't have to charge it 205, but we can charge an unresident. He didn't present that.
How 205?
He just presented to a budget this evening. Two budgets. The order says council cannot adopt the budget that is not balanced. He presented to the director fund balance budget not balanced in a golf course funding. I mean, we do operate, I just, Mr. Chairman. We just keep operating and operating. And we go against a charter, he's accepted. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Henderson. Anyone else to the floor? Mr. Ringer, welcome. Name and address, Mr. Rutter.
Good evening, Mr. President. Don Ringer, 1801 Lurie Street, Allentown. There's a gentleman named Bruce Sharkin that walks up and down 19th Street every morning and cleans the curbs and the gutters. This man's a professor at Quittstown State College, and he does this every day. And I'm asking, can we give him a little shout-out from the city to thank you or something?
Sure we can.
Here's his... I'll give you this.
Hey, we'd like to give him a proclamation. We'll give him one. Give him one. Let's have it. Yeah, that's plenty. Sharkin, remember Dr. Sharkin?
Does he live there?
Yeah, he lives right up on 19th Street. Nice guy.
Maybe you could film a gift certificate to somebody.
You're very generous, tonight. Mr. O'Connell, this new dedication is not going to take effect if you keep saying things like that. No, we'll get on this. I want to ask a question. I want to ask a question about the stormwater situation. The stormwater tax is a tax to balance the budget, correct or not? Well, that's your assumption. Am I correct or not? Is it a tax to balance the budget?
Ms. Arzl? Go ahead.
We have a balanced budget. Then why are we implementing a stormwater tax?
It's an EPE mandate that we got.
Okay. When the budget is established, we balance the revenues and expenditures.
Are we going to be better off in Allentown environmentally with this new tax?
As I've said before, I wish you haven't been able to stop using the word tax. Use the word fee, not because it sounds nicer, smells nicer, or anything. You get this confused. It's going to have a separate location in there. The answer is yes. It will make our streams better. This is a national policy. We've been commanded to do this. I have a mandate to use the words, thank you. Everybody has to do it. Unlike your houses, unlike places that are not taxed, on real estate tax. I hate to make the terrible joke using the sacred book, but the rain falls equally on the just and the unjust. It falls equally on the taxed and non-taxed. For the first time, this type of legislation calls every institution to bear the burden of clean streams because everybody gets rained upon. This is very clear. It's doable. And the money is clearly set up in the budget process. Has nothing to do with balancing our budget, et cetera.
I don't understand that. My question is, if we're going to be environmentally better off, then we should tax Emeas. We should tax Whitehall. We should tax everybody. And also, the city of Allentown should be taxed for the brine and everything else they put on the streets that are running into the streams.
Don, Mr. Ringer, every entity in America is being subject to the same demand. It's not, we were picked out or they were picked out. Emeas, Lower McCandee. Every municipality is subject to this exact same mandate, which is clean up everything that you're putting in the streams other than the sewage, which in our case goes through a separate system where that's a different clean water ordinance. Everybody has to do this. And what, for the first time, people have argued, why is it such massive things as Lehigh Valley Health Network or Octopus, depending on your point of view? How come they never pay anything? Okay? So, for the first time, it's saying, everybody's going to do it. The rain falls equally on the just and the unjust, the profitable or the nonprofits. It has nothing to do with balancing budgets. What we have to do is see that our fee is directed towards activities that will result in cleaner streams.
What's this money going to be used for? It's going to be used to help balance the budget.
No.
Where's it going to go?
It goes to pay for workers to put in much better piping, put in larger pumps, that sort of thing. It has nothing to do with the city's ordinary expenses.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening again. Mike Kaminsky, 779 Benton Street, Allentown. Couple of questions. The ordinance for weed growth on a property, I believe it says that you can't have weeds or grass that is higher than 10 inches, I believe, on your property. Does that apply to front yards and backyards? Like, is that the whole of the property? So, okay.
I'm going to know from Mr. Leiter. Mr. Leiter.
Yes, okay. There's a property that I'd like to put on record, 2309 Washington Street, West Washington Street. Front of the house, I brought them on record previously, and the front of their yard has been cut. But if you drive through the Carrot Street Alley, which is the alley directly behind the house, and you look into the fenced-off area, it looks like it belongs in the middle of the Amazon jungle. It is a significantly large, you know, 10, 15-inch high. There's cut-up logs. It just, to me, that's going to breed mice and vermin and just a lot of things that aren't going to be a positive for the neighborhood. So, I just want to put that on record. If somebody could please take a look at that, I'd really appreciate that. So, I understand. I'm just getting educated now. So, I apologize that this has been brought up, and thank you, Dr. Rutter, for clearing a couple of things up from Mr. Ringer's comments. Is this, is the water fee that is being imposed on us, is that as a result of, that is a federal mandate? So, I mean, and maybe this isn't the place to ask this. So, Bethlehem is going to impose the same fee? Or, I'm sorry, same type of fee, like a...
Same type of fee. Correct. They must meet the mandate, and how they do it, it's up to them. They have to get it done.
Okay, all right. So, I guess my follow-up question then is, impervious, you know, land is, if we pave it or we have concrete over that, why are we paving over our parks, then? If that's, you know, like, we, in the past few years, we've paved over a significant part of the Rose Garden. We paved over a stretch of Lehigh Parkway that used to be just, you know, stone, cinder, what? I don't know what the correct terminology is. You know, now all of a sudden, that's macadam. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot there by sitting there and taking our Parks Department and saying, okay, now we've got all this other? Is that not going to count towards anything? I mean, let's, let's call it what it is. Why are we going to sit there and create ourselves a more expansive bill?
That's a good question and a fair question. The answer is, things we have done to get us where we are today is not necessarily the best thing to have done. For example, we were very, example, why do we have roads and then we put macadam on them? The rain will go off. They also have all the chemicals that come off with it, et cetera, et cetera. And the answer, short answer, is every municipality will have to look at what it has and decide whether to go forward with more macadam. They'll have to pay for it. If they remove the macadam and have gravel, et cetera, they will get credit for stones. They get credit for all the things that are pervious and things that are impervious. You have to...
Okay. Fair enough. And so, my advice then is, then let's look at removing a lot of that stuff and also improve the natural beauty of our parks, which has been neglected for some time. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Kaminsky, I think somebody will visit 2309 Washington Street.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else to the floor? Seeing none, Pill of Minutes by Common Consent. Oh, no. Is someone up?
Oh, yeah. So, all right. Thank you. I just, I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, pull down the mic. We're naming addresses. We know who you are, but naming addresses.
Okay. My name is John Lundje, and I just live at 935 North 17th Street. And my question is, what happens if my neighbor, who is the bamboo guy, does not comply with the ordinance? Let's say if he just pays $100 fine, is that actually the end of the bamboo issue?
Ms. Leiter?
It's not going to be the end of the bamboo issue. What we'll do is, we will continue to go after where the not-compliant owners are. So, if we cite them, we may take them to court. But we will do everything we can that's within our power, within the ordinance, to bring them to compliance. That may take some time.
Oh, yes. Everything takes time. And then I just want to commend the city council for their very good job of passing the bamboo ordinance, which will actually make the neighborhood of Allentown much brighter. So, I just want to, again, wish you a happy holiday.
Thank you. But you, no, you started it, so, you know, you're to be commended. You're to be commended.
Well, I mean, you are the people who actually put it into a law, and I'm very grateful for it.
Thank you for saying that, and you have a good holiday also.
All right, thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Okay.
Anyone else to pass to the floor? Seem none, pull a minutes by common consent.
Yes.
So move. Committee reports, we have no individual committee reports tonight. We'll discuss our reports at budget hearings. We will now go to Mr. Glazier, Controller's Report. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just a couple of brief audits I'd like to discuss, but I have one nice piece of news. We had a young man who did a process flow for us this summer, John Dusick from Yuleboro College, and he interviewed with one of the big four accounting firms recently and he got a job there. But as part of his interview, they asked him about the work that he did for the city and the process flow that he did. And they were very impressed with the quality of the work that he did. And he felt that it helped him get a job, so it's a good thing to hear. We did a couple of audits I'd just like to touch base on. We did a cash count at the golf course to look at their petty cash. They have three cash drawers, two in the pro shop, one in the driving range and one change fund. Briefly, they have three point of sale registers. We observed that all the registers were physically attended, they were not closed or locked when not used. Inquiry revealed the register drawers sometimes stick and do not always open. We recommend that the administration should get that fixed and, because they should remain closed when not used. And the administration agreed, they'll contact the vendor to work on that. They don't have a deposit endorsement stamp for their checks, they're gonna work on getting that as well. We did a bank reconciliation, we completed a bank reconciliation. This one is for the end of May 2017. We hope to, with the administration's assistance, to catch up significantly so that we get a little bit more current. There was one new finding. We identified one account's payable wire for $2,500 that was not recorded in Eden or on the cash sub. We recommend to provide a bank audit trail. All wires should be posted on Eden and the cash sub. And the administration agrees, treasury does not always record or post all invoices until completely approved by all. We need to get a little better on that. And finally, we did a petty cash count and easy facility receipt count in the Parks Department. The overall physical account, cash funds were physically counted by the auditor and verified by Parks Recreation Bureau personnel. The totals physically counted were compared to the prescribed total. The petty cash fund was over by $87.66. They couldn't determine why it was over by that amount. That amount has been returned to the treasury. Weak safeguarding of petty cash funds. We attempted to do this count on the 26th of October, but the petty cash custodian was out and the petty cash designate did not have access to the funds. Subsequently, we were able to do the count and we note the following. The petty cash designate did not know where the funds were maintained. Additionally, the designate's key to the file cabinet containing the petty cash was lost and had not been replaced. The only key available was the petty cash custodians. The petty cash is not maintained in a lockbox or safe. The money was in bank bags, in paper envelopes, rolled coins were in the desk. And it was unclear at the time whether it was part of the petty cash fund. All the monies were in the petty cash custodian's lock desk. The petty cash log did not agree with the cash in the bag, so it's evident from the overage that the petty cash had not been counted on a regular basis. The petty cash had not been replenished in over four months and the petty cash balances appeared high for the activity. The recommendations are, a replacement key should be requested, a lock box should also be ordered to safeguard the monies. Petty cash should be counted every time the funds are replenished and the petty cash balance should be challenged and if necessary adjusted. The department's response, they've already obtained duplicate keys. They'll be designating a new net designate who will be responsible in case the custodians are available. They will investigate, appointing a lockbox or safe to keep the funds. They need to appoint a location that will be secure. Petty cash will now be counted and reconciled every time there's a transaction. Petty cash will be replenished in a timely manner. Non-compliance with money deposit procedure. For the money deposit date, the 7/11/2013, deposits to the treasurer's office are to be made daily. During our review, the easy facility receipts, and I think this is the software that Parks uses to, for permit fees and such, when fields and pavilions are scheduled. We identified one check that was, one check that was received on Friday, 10/27, but as of Tuesday, 10/31, had not been deposited. Parks should comply with the money deposit procedures. And the administration responds, so we've made it clear to all staff that any checks or cash must be taken and deposited by 3:00 P.M. Anything that is received after 3:00 P.M. will have to wait until the next business day due to time constraints. And that is my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Glazier, appreciate it. Mr. Henley, Bill's introduction, we've been agreeing. It's not on my agenda.
We have?
It's not on my agenda.
Yeah, then we can show up. We have actually?
Actually, Mr. Kimble is here, so obviously he's here for a reason, Mark.
Yeah, we have four appointments and the appointments are, for Barry Brokes, terms to aspire, 18, 2021. David Huber, Huber, 108, 21. Ellen Roberts, 18, 2021. And Michelle Olson, 103, 2020.
Okay, all for the HARB?
HARB.
Just sort of, that's where your board, all for HARB. Mr. Kimble, you wanna come up, please? Give us a little brief overview of these individuals. Obviously, are they all, are they all new appointments or are some reappointments? We'll go from there.
Good evening, they're all reappointments. Starting with Barry Brokes, he's our architect on the board. His contribution is extremely valuable. It's very difficult to get an architect to volunteer for HARB. It is mandated in the enabling legislation that we have an architect on the board. So his appointment, his appointment is very critical. David Huber, who is here tonight, he's our HARB chairman, obviously an important part of the group. Barry, I'm sorry, Ellen Roberts is our vice chair, vice president on the board. So she is also very important, very critical. And Michelle Olson is relatively new, but she has been very good. She's a resident of Old Allentown.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimble. Any comments from my colleagues? I'm, I'm taking your thunder, but if you wanna, I was on my agenda, but it's on the, it's on the actual, okay. Thank you, Mr. Kimble, any comments from my colleagues about these individuals? Any comments from the public about these individuals? Mr. Henley, wanna call a voice phone on each one? I spelled it Barry Brokes.
Okay, Mr. Brokes, Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrix.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Ms. Chapa.
Yes.
Ms. Sisak, she didn't know names.
And who did David Huber?
Mr. Huber. Mr. Hendrix.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
And Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Ellen Roberts.
Ms. Roberts. Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hendrix.
Yes.
Michelle Olson.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrix.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kimble, you said, who's, who's present, I said? You said, Mr. Huber is present?
Yeah, David Huber is here.
Mr. Huber, would you please rise? We know who you are, but rise. You wanna come up and say anything, but, well, we thank you for your services along with Barry, Ellen and Michelle. But thank you for your service and appreciate it, you know, I don't want to go on for many more years. And I think council is an entity that thanks you.
I think you're fair of the reappointment, on all of us.
You're very welcome. Anything else, Mr. Kimble? Good to know? Okay, let's move on then.